Time being seven o'clock, this meeting is called to order. Roll call when you're ready.
Barkle?
Here.
Heavley?
Here.
Kettering?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Williams? Hoffman?
Here.
Okay. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes for last month's meeting?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, are there any items to be added to the agenda? If there are none, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Alright, so we have to go person by person. If you have any conflict of interest declarations, state your name and say yes or no.
Dennis Michael Bell.
Kristi Schultz, no.
Dan Kettering, no.
Sherri Hoffman, no.
Chris Barkle, no.
Doug Gavely, no.
Okay, no conflict of interest declarations for this meeting. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Daniel Swihart. Swihart, sorry. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to use his property as an Airbnb in a moderate density rural residential district R2 as per Article 7, Section 709. Said property is legally described as lot B except the west three feet of said lot B and all of lot C. Erskines Platte, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per Platte recorded in Book S3, page 61. The E911 address is 304 Gavin's Point Road. And if you could state your name for the record.
My name's Dan Swihart.
Alright.
And thank you all for considering my request for this. Our request is really when we're not using the property for personal use that we would like to have permission to use it as a vacation rental. Currently, the property, as you stated, is a zone moderate density residential, and we're really uncertain if that allows for vacation rental already. We'd like to rent the property for vacation use, providing, I guess, tax revenue to the county and also help us offset the cost of the renovations that are currently underway. We're attempting to avoid future issues with the county by requesting under Section 709, the classification of unlisted uses, the issuing of a conditional use permit if we need to. Now, bed and breakfast is already something that's allowed under the moderate density residential designation, and since since that is a flavor of vacation rental already, it's possible that we fit into that too, okay? So, I'm uncertain whether we actually need a conditional use permit, but if we do, then that's what we're asking for. Google search of vacation homes that are in the Lewis and Clark Lake area shows that there's quite a few houses that are already being offered on sites such as Airbnb and BBRO. So, we feel that this would be a consistent use with what's already being allowed out in that area. And so, if again, we may not need a conditional use permit for something that's already being going on. While I've got your attention too, I might just bring up one other point. Beacon, that's you know what beacon is. It's completely useless for out on Gavin's Point Road in our area. If you look that up, the lot, the property lines don't line up with anything.
Actually, they just corrected that. So, I think in your packets it may be wrong, but on the new beacon, it shows it correctly.
Alright, well, then then strike that. Super. Alright. I had trouble modifying the map to try to show in the permit what I was asked to do, which would show where the property lines were.
Looks like you have a nice location for it.
Yeah.
Also, for clarification, as you look at R2, bed and breakfasts are a conditional use also.
How many rooms, bedrooms does your facility hold?
It'll have three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms, so three couples or three families?
It has two bedrooms. Okay.
Alright. Sorry, two bedrooms, two bedrooms.
There'll be one full couch somewhere in there.
So, it's probably like a couple?
We're trying to keep the numbers down. It'll probably be possibly three couples, but that's just for our family, but it's gonna be them up. We don't want to have any impact to the neighbors, so.
Sounds like a two-bedroom unit sleeps six.
Correct.
Are you remodeling that now? And you don't live there?
No.
Not at all?
We live next door. We live on lot, lot D, and this is lot B and C. Just the first house.
Neighbors on the other side, just on your side?
There are neighbors to the west, and they are here tonight.
Do you have experience in renting other vacation property? Or is this a new venture for you?
This is gonna be a new venture.
We can business property rental. So, in home rental, not vacation rental.
Right.
Long-term.
So, are you planning to rent it by the week then, probably, or have you decided?
That kind of is still up in the air. With the demand for labor, for contractors to help us get this project going, we are significantly behind schedule. So, even saying that we're gonna hit this vacation season might be generous.
I see.
But we've gotta start somewhere, so.
Sure.
This is one of the boxes that has to be checked.
Anyone on the board have any other questions?
I have mine.
I think it looks like a good fit for the area. We gotta ask for public input, unless you have any other questions for us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this proposed change? Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion or additional discussion from the board. I think it looks like a good fit for the area.
I would move approval of the conditional use permit for Daniel Swihart.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? I have a second. Roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavley?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is Michael Cookta. Applicants are requesting a rezone for the following properties from Rural Transitional District, RT, to moderate density rural residential. Said property are legally described as tract three of DJ's addition, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota, as per Platte, as recorded in Book S19, page 350. Tract five of DJ's addition in Lot A, Section 16, Township 93 North, range 55 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Tract four DJ's addition, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per Platte, recorded in Book S20, page 85. Tract one DJ's addition, Yankton County, South Dakota. Lots A excluding tracts one through six, DJ's addition and the east, 558 feet of lot B, Yankton County, South Dakota. Tract six of DJ's addition in lot B, Section 16, Township. 93 North, range 55 West of the 5th PM in Yankton County, South Dakota. And if you could state your name, please, sir?
My name is Michael Cookta.
Alright, Mike. So, tell us why you would like a rezone, sir?
With that land there, there's already five landowners that have 10 acres or less that they own. Out of them five landowners, there are three landowners that have houses on them already. Rezone it to moderate density. It would bring everybody's property more into compliance. As well as, I would be getting a gift of two acres from Harley and Chris Llewellyn that have a home there already, and I would be purchasing another three acres from Darlene Jensen, which would be my wife's grandma. And then, in the far northwest corner, Darlene's daughter would like to purchase an acre and a half to build a home on as well. There would be, if it goes through, there would be an easement road on the far north side of the property that would not cause any disturbance to any of the other homes that are in that general vicinity. That would be the overall goal of rezoning it to moderate density.
And so, how many acres are altogether being rezoned at this?
It would be
Did you add them up?
Close to if Brad King's property is rezoned as well, it would be close to 26 acres, I believe.
Excluding that center part, but correct. And that's where that other person lives that's gonna sell you the chunk, or?
No, so there's, Brad King's property is clear to the east side, and then the next property over is Larrington's property. And then, next property to the west of that would be Chris and Harley Llewellyn. That would be my mother and father-in-law. And everything to the west of that property would be Darlene Jensen, would be the wife's grandma.
Are these people here in the middle here?
Yes, they are.
They're gonna chunk with the whole work.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure about which map it would be. Oh, that different. If you look at this. Bill, could you explain this a little bit more?
Which one do you want to be zoned?
Well, you've got
Well, that was just the site plan that came off. We added this to show all the properties that signed letters. So, that, hey, it's got the green outline. These are on all of the property owners that have asked to be part of the rezone. So, you've got the Brad King, which is right here on the right. Llewellyn's on both of these, and Michael was going to get one of this. This is Darlene Jensen. She also owns all of this, and they were going to plot this out, so Michael was gonna buy three acres here.
So, I have a total of five acres.
Yep, and then I think they were gonna make two more lots, one here and one here. And then, this is another property owner who asked to be included too. So, it's this whole area and this parcel that have requested for the rezone.
And you do have homes in close proximity to one another in that area already?
There's a home here, a home here, and a home here.
Right.
And this is all rural transitional, 20 acres, so they're all out of compliance now. So, the thought was the rezone.
Okay, so, where your pointer is right now is a piece that's not
Correct.
Okay, so, 'cause on your map here, the green line doesn't go across
Yep.
Up there.
Goes around.
So, that was making me think that this is a piece that's not going to be rezoned.
That's correct. They have not asked to be rezoned. Everybody else in that area has had a letter asking to be part of the rezone.
You can see the red lines within the green boundary. Those are the lot lines.
Right.
Right. But what you have up there in the light green box?
That's That, when you pick out a parcel
That's this piece here? That's where, that's from the beacon.
Yeah. So, this is one parcel Llewellyn's own, this is another parcel I own. And when you do the initial application, it'll only let you outline the property that's the red outline. So, the green is the combination of all of them.
So, we're leaving out this piece?
Yep, this piece right here.
Yep, the 270.
Yep.
100, 270.
Well, I think the whole idea of rural transitional is the fact that it is a transitional type of zoning, and then eventually it will become something else. And clearly, these people would like to be able to develop their property a little bit more than they can right now with the existing zoning. And I think that that is in Yankton County's best interests, more tax revenue. It's on the river bottom, so I mean, as far as its use for agriculture is questionable. I mean, it's not prime farm ground land by any means. But I need to ask if there's anything from the board before I ask for public input. Do you have any additional questions for him?
I'm glad he came, 'cause I had a lot of questions before he explained what he was planning on doing, 'cause none of the numbers and the lot numbers were matching up, so that cleared a lot of load off my mind. 'Cause all I could see is a purchase pending for two acres, and I'm like, this isn't even the right lot number, so. Your description helps a lot, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else before I ask for public input? No? Alright, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular agenda item? Okay, hearing none, time for public input is now closed. I think that he has several neighbors that want to join him in the rezone process. Seems to be a higher use of the land than what it is right now.
Gary and Bill, do you have any reason that this would do anything to the disadvantage of the county?
No, there's not. This is gonna be one of the first areas that, you know, we've been talking a lot about smaller lots and economic development and things, and I think where it makes sense, which in this case, I believe it does, you're going from RT to R2, which this goes all the way down to there's one parcel that's only one acre, so it fits all that group, and they can do their divisions as they're proposing for the future. Couple other of them wanna subdivide a little more, so to bring everything into compliance, I think this just makes a lot more sense to do.
Are there any road agreements on maintenance of the roads in that area?
No, there is not currently. You know, they've always accessed, most of these people have already lived out there for many years, and they've always accessed the same area, like you mentioned, just for access purposes for the applicant, the main applicant, they'll have a private easement continuing on from that Snipes Road, so.
They won't need to add additional road to get to the folks over in the
No, they'll just have an easement through there.
It'll be their road anyway.
Yes, either way, yeah.
Have you talked about an access?
Don't you think it might, a lot more sense to rezone the whole area?
You mean the one lot that didn't?
Yeah, I mean, the whole square. I mean, down the road, isn't that gonna be a problem or potential problem?
Generally not. I've did this in the past too, and where we've had, but they certainly can apply themselves down the line if they want to divide it up more or choose to do that, so. Whether they do it now or later, doesn't really change for the rest of them.
Yeah, and they don't appear to be upset about the rest of them changing where they would be here tonight.
They are here. They're in attendance.
Yeah.
And they don't have any problem with it?
No.
There you go.
The only other thing would be too, is, you know, as we talk about down the road, as they go through their comprehensive plan and they start relooking at boundaries again of where the districts are gonna be, because of this being started there already, they might look at expanding that, recommending to expand that district.
Sure, sure, that's definitely a possibility if there was other bigger acreages that were interested in doing that down the line, and like I said, we already have been in talks with a couple other individuals that have like five, six lots that are wanting to do the same thing, so. Some of them have pre-existing homes and others don't, but you know, whether it's Ag or RT, at least they're getting more in compliance versus having the 20-acre lots, so.
Thank you, Gary.
If there's no additional discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the requested rezone from rural transis- transis- transitional district to moderate density residential.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Heavley?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Now we have a bunch of flats. Hey, lot 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 of Crestview Homes subdivision in the northeast quarter of Section 21. T93 North, range 56 West of the 5th PM in Yankton County, South Dakota. Is there anybody here to speak on the flats? Is there any problem with the flats? Alright. Any discussion about this proposed plan? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the flat, having already been through the checklist. Okay, we have a motion to approve from Dennis. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote.
Barkle?
Yes.
Evly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Hey, next one. A replat of a portion of lot four of Cabisman Track eight located in the south half of the south half of section eleven and in the north half of section fourteen. T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west to the fifth PM in Yankton County, South Dakota, and a portion of Cabisman Track eight located in the south half of the south half of section eleven and in the north half of section fourteen. T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west to the fifth PM in Yankton County, South Dakota, here and after known as. How come I don't have the second page?
Here.
Known as lots one and two of Kaiser Canyon Edition in the south half of the south half of section eleven and in the north half of section fourteen. T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM in Yankton County, South Dakota. Are there any problems with this flat? Nope. Okay. Having the approval of the zoning administrator, do we have a motion on this flat?
We'll make a motion to approve the flat.
All right, we have a motion to approve the flat as presented, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Michael.
Barkle?
Yes.
Evly?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can't lick my fingers, so I can't.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's hard, isn't it? You don't realize how often you do that. Having a question. Just a second. Okay, so, the Article Five discussion is just going to be a discussion, we're not going to make any motions or anything on this tonight. It says discussion on the agenda, so I'm assuming that is the purpose of it. The definitions, accessory buildings. Previous to this, the shipping containers have been allowed in an egg zone as storage. I personally don't see a problem with it. They are mouse-proof, they are waterproof, they are meant to go across the ocean clear from China or wherever they originate from. They basically make perfect storage, better than you can build a shed. Because nothing can get in there. And if it's in an egg zone, I really don't see what the problem is with it.
I agree, I had another call about that also, and, and so, there's two ways we can go about it. We can just strike the egg district from that definition, and that's in blue.
Yeah, that's the way it was before.
And I think the other, what we were trying to accomplish is, and what's been discussed in the past, is under five oh five, number one, the issue we've had is that it just says accessory egg structures. But we've had a lot of people that aren't farmers, that are just trying to put up storage building garages and things, so. We could just strike agriculture on that and just have accessory structure, use and structures. I think we'd accomplish everything that we're trying to do, so. So, if everybody agrees to strike it from the definition, and then we'll talk about five oh three when you get to it, or five oh five.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. I think that that is, basically, you're repurposing something that's meant to go huge long distances and keep everything dry and clean and safe. And I think it makes a lot more sense to be reusing that container than it does for them to end up in, in a landfill somewhere. At least it's being repurposed.
The original discussion on the containers and.
That was in a residential.
Car buses and stuff like that.
That was in a residential.
We didn't want them showing up in residential.
Well, sure, and, and that makes sense, but in an egg zone, I don't see the reason for it.
Like for feed storage or something like that, or, oh, on the farm, I know some guys even store their antique equipment in them because they're.
Right, like you said.
You know.
Yeah, they're dry, they're clean, mice can't get to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because mice can do a lot of damage.
I agree.
Christie, you, you're making it up, and you got more points?
No, 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 that's fine.
Let me take a minute or two to explain how we got, got to this.
Okay.
Because I think it's important. Gary, Bill and I have met once, and we had three proposals for changes to the old ordinance, Article Five. And we discussed all, each, Gary completed a proposal. Sherry completed one, and Chris completed one. I met with Chris for about three or four hours, and we went through a number of things that he, as a farmer, saw as things that should be looked at for possible change. Our intention was, was to bring it to this meeting and then get it forwarded to the commission, and I guess, I guess, I, I thought we were gonna approve it, if we're just gonna discuss it.
Well, it says discussion on the.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Or, we set a timeframe out to.
This isn't a hearing, so, the, 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 what we were talking about before is that we would have the discussion here tonight, and then we'd send your feedback back to the county commission for their, for their review and more discussion, and then we would start setting the public hearings with the ten day notice and stuff, hopefully, in, for the April meeting if we can, so.
Well, I don't know what, how the rest of you feel, but I guess I would be more comfortable if we went page by page and just, are there any discussion points on that page? Because we've been going over this for several years.
Well, that's why I'm, that's kind of what I was doing, and then I'm talking about the, the, having a shipping container in an egg zone, I think that's perfectly acceptable.
Yep.
Does everybody else think that's all right?
Yeah.
So, we can just strike eggs? Agricultural district in accessory use of structure and accessory building, is that acceptable? I, I wouldn't want them in a, in a, in a R2, you know, residential district either. But I think in an egg zone, they can be utilized quite well.
Might be better to have it in a container than flowing around the neighborhood.
Exactly, yeah, definitely.
Talk to me your mics, please, I can't hear them.
He was, he was just saying that it would be safer and better in a side, a container, than it would be.
Right.
Screwing it all over the place.
I think we're.
Yeah. All right, so. Can we flip the page, or is there, anybody else have concerns with anything else in there?
Yeah. I guess, on the very top of the first page, when you strike out the whole definition of agriculture, I guess, what was the purpose of striking it out, or what's the rationale behind that? Gary?
That happened.
That happened originally when, when Joe made his proposal, and it was basically struck out because I think at the time, it was felt it wasn't needed, because when you go to five oh three, it pretty much covers, covers what egg is, and so, it was just kind of replaced by five oh three one, is what their thought process was at the time.
It was still just a proposal though.
Right. Yeah, all of this is still a proposal at this point.
Right, we should have discussed that though, I agree, yeah.
Well, I don't have a problem with leaving it in there, I don't think it hurts anything to leave it in there.
Agricultural definition, is that what you, agricultural definition, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, the very first paragraph on the first page.
I guess just to keep it consistent, I see what you're talking about in section five oh three, that it's basically got a definition of agriculture there, but none of the other permitted uses have a definition of them, I would assume they all refer back to the definitions, so. Keep it consistent, I think, should stay in the definitions, and then just say agriculture, agriculture in section five oh three.
Yeah, I think that was a clean room myself, too, if you just leave the definition where the definitions are, and then put agricultural use as a permitted principal use. How does the rest of you feel about that?
What, what were you saying again, Christian?
I was saying, what, I agree with Chris, I mean, it's listing the definition of agriculture, but it's not in the definition category, why don't we just leave it in the definition category? And then put agriculture as a permitted use the way it was before.
With one line. Yeah, just the, where it was struck instead of the other.
Right.
Right, yeah, I, I, I thought the first definition was fine, too.
Yeah.
Really.
But mostly, no matter what you do in any of the, any of the zones, if it talks about something, usually they're like bed and breakfast, there's a definition for bed and breakfast back in there, so you know what.
At the beginning.
Okay, I see.
And then, yeah, that's right, then you showed me, and then like it did, yeah, that, that's right, it did have it at both places. So, I, I, I agree too, Chris.
So, you want it both places, or you just want it one place?
I guess I thought it was fine, the original way, with it just in the definitions.
Just in the definitions, yeah. I mean, I don't think that agriculture is something that people are mostly confused about, but.
That works, so I'll strike it.
And then just leave the word agriculture as a listed use.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
And you, and then delete the new definition, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'd leave the word agriculture only.
All right.
I think at the bottom of the page, two words, the definition for agribusiness, and then in the red, they had concerns about business going away and someone wanting to build a home, I think that's a kind of a good point, because some of those, you know, whether it be a seed or chemical or whatever, something happens to where that folds up and it's on, it was already permitted in that five acre plot, and all of a sudden, it goes defunct or whatever, for whatever reason, now you've got five acres sitting there. If it's not picked back up by another agribusiness entity, what becomes of that? And I imagine if it had a great big storage shed on it, that somebody would like to build a house next to it to keep their camper in, so does it be because it was, it was an agricultural use to start with, does that become somewhat like the abandoned farmstead? Issue where all of a sudden now it's, well, an egg use, but now it's abandoned, but it's only five acres, but you gotta repurpose it somehow.
Well, you know, it's a lot of record, so whatever happens to it, happens to it, I would guess. Because once it's, it, once it's established, it's a lot of record, you know?
Right.
And who knows, they might get more money for it if they sold it to somebody that wanted to build a nice home.
Yeah, I, I'm not, not denying that at all, I'm just saying, you know, it's gotta, there's gotta be some kind of a provision that we have to have. It's just like we said with the abandoned farmstead, doesn't matter how big it is, as long as there's some evidence that there was a farmstead there at one time, that you could still plot that.
Right, but this is already plotted out.
Yeah.
I think it's a lot about the rate of the people that own lands surrounding it.
And the setbacks according to.
Have problems. That was an egg zone area prior. Now it becomes residential. In an egg district.
Yeah.
Yeah. Setbacks and so forth, I think that's where the discussion.
But that would probably come into play then at that point, when it was gonna, if it was gonna be sold, and they came in for a building, permit to build a house on it, then the stuff that we talk about, about the setbacks and all that stuff would kick in, and they'd have to meet those requirements in order to be able to, to get the building from that.
I also, I also see a problem with the agribusiness part as, since it, oh, since it has a different lot size requirement of being five acres, which is considerably less than twenty acres, I think that you're gonna have a lot of people coming in saying, I'm gonna build a house and a shed, and I'm gonna do repair work, or I'm gonna raise. build a house in a shed and I'm gonna do repair work or I'm gonna raise some, a few hogs or something to sell to the neighbors and I'm gonna have an agribusiness just so that they can get the five acre lot size. And I think you're gonna see a lot of people abusing it and just to get that reduction in lot size and not necessarily be a commercial enterprise, so I don't know if that would require making a stricter definition of an agribusiness or getting rid of it altogether. I think the intent on it, I guess someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent of whoever put that in there was, or when you have someone that just wants to put up a, a seed shed or, or a chemical shed, run a custom applicator or something out of them, they don't wanna buy 20 acres, but I think that the way it's written, that it's gonna get abused by, by anyone else that just wants to get a five acre lot.
Well, I don't think there's probably that many people that are looking to do that, you know, I'm not sure how much of a problem that would actually be, I understand your concern, but I don't think there's hordes of people that want to live in the middle of nowhere, if there's nothing around that is of cultural or, you know, landscaping that is of interest, I mean, you understand, people wanna live by bodies of water, that's just the way people are, they like to live by lakes, they like to live by rivers, there's just something calming about bodies of water, sometimes they'll dig their own, you know, so they can have a lake in their front yard. I can't think, and I could be completely wrong, I can't think of any agribusinesses right now that aren't pretty much on a main drag or someplace that has heavy traffic or, you know, like on Highway 46 or something like that, where they have a hard surface road and to handle the truck traffic that a seed business would generate, you know? So, and I think they probably would be more likely to buy land in an area like that, you know what I mean, just so that they have that, that solid infrastructure to run their trucks on, so, I mean, I understand your concern, I just don't know how often it would actually come up in practice.
This, this blue line, this, this is what was added by Sherry's proposal when she wanted to go to a five acre for a-
Yes.
That, that's where that came in?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking.
That was discussed at the county-
Right.
County commission level and then the red one I put in was just, she said, well, I don't know if that was the best definition, so I tried to find another one and I don't know if anyone has any preference one way or the other, but it has to be different one that we think would be better, but I just added that in as a secondary definition.
And the reasoning is that if I remember right, Don, is that they feel that we shouldn't be, we shouldn't give, this, the only variance that I've ever given for an agribusiness was Dean and Dallas Hansen's seed, since I've been on the board, that's the only agribusiness that I remember ever giving a variance for, if I'm wrong, but they feel that giving these variances is illegal, is that why we'd wanna do something like this, or?
No, I don't, I don't think it's illegal.
Well-
Make it clear.
But I, I, I mean, what, I mean, like I said, I've been on this, around this for three years or whatever it's been, we've only had one, I don't know if we wanna change that for one incident. I don't know what the rest of you feel, but-
Well, a lot of it depends on, you know, what type of business it is too and like you say, who's gonna wanna do it other than if you're requiring water or, or natural gas or some other utility that's not available readily out just wherever you decide to park the building, you know, I, I don't see it as a big issue either way, but I don't know that we need to make it an issue, I guess, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, if there's a nice building out there and you have one close to your father's farm, general seed, across the road is residential, in that case, I guess I kind of agree with Christie.
What do you have close to you? There's a big seed shed.
In two.
There's a big seed shed.
In two seeds, and that's the only one around us.
But, but he's got a good point, I mean, we haven't had a lot of agribusiness requests for that, so, it might be, I don't really care either, I, I don't have strong feelings anyway on the issue, just trying to verify what my experience is.
So Mike, then you just wanna strike agribusiness complete definitions?
I don't care.
I wouldn't feel-
I really don't care either.
I kinda like the second definition, because I looked up the actual definition, the USDA and it kinda matched the second one a little bit better with food and other ag products or services, I don't know that it would be ready to throw it away or not personally, but I'm new, so, you know, obviously, new to the opinion.
I guess I couldn't hear you, what you were saying. Just speak up a little bit.
I sure will, sorry about that, I said I actually liked the second paragraph, which I think on my, printed on page two of my version, because I looked up at the US Department of Ag to see what agribusiness actually was defined as and it's basically food and other ag products or services, I thought, well, that definition really doesn't hurt anything being left in, so that was my opinion.
Well, I think the only problem I see with the second agribusiness definition on page two is it has production in there, production meaning production agriculture, growing of animals and that would be a CAPO, so that would be a totally different animal than other types of agribusiness.
Right, yeah.
So I would prefer they strike the word production out of that as it pertains to animals.
Oh, you'd be okay with other products or services as kind of a blanket term?
Right, right, but I don't think production belongs in there.
So if we had a situation where a feedlot on a government, it's not on-
Well, then say production of feed or feed, you know, um-
It's ag products.
Yeah, ag products, but does not include animals or something in there, so there's no gray area there, or they can see that as a loophole and, yeah, so if you wanted to say production of grain or, or-
Agri products.
Agri products.
Products.
Value added, that, that, value added, that's a good deal.
And services, because it could be different.
I guess the product is already included in the very next definition after agribusiness and definitions agriculture, product, processing facility. Where it has feed, you know, so I mean-
Okay, so do you wanna just strike production altogether then in that second definition? Since you're, you're following, you're following up on a more specific definition of ag product processing facility in the next paragraph, so we probably could strike production altogether in that second definition and there would be no room there.
Same.
I think we could just as well strike the whole agribusiness definition and not add complication to, to the ordinance.
The second one?
Then, well, yeah, any, either the first or the second definition.
The blue or the red.
Yeah, strike both of them.
I, I, I just don't, I don't know, I don't see any need for them, but so.
Gary? Well, that's, yeah, that was a big, that was a big discussion about it, because the on the commission side, so I know all that, so I'll tell people about that one together, but I'm certainly going to, to strike them, strike it out some easily, if that's what this group wants to do. I guess a question for that on it, yeah, do you have any agribusiness either come in or a request?
I haven't had any agribusinesses requested since I've been here, but, but I know periodically somebody wants to do a, a seed operation or something, I had a few, couple of those in, in Brown County, I probably, probably had three of them that I can think of off the top, so I know it does happen periodically, but like we mentioned, the reason I put that note in there was because there, there was some discussion about, well, what happens if that business goes away, can they, can they just build a home there or not and get around the 20 acres, so, so.
But if they get a variance to, to reduce their lot size like they did before, it's the same situation.
But once, like you said, if it's an existing lot, legal, then they could just build a home as long as they could meet the setbacks.
And they meet the setbacks and, and all the reporting, so, I mean, basically our ordinance already has that eventuality, it, it's not something new, but it hasn't happened yet either in the last one year, I think, where they've taken a, a seed business or, or an ag business and converted it to a, I mean, I've never seen that, that difference from the beginning of this whole thing.
And that's where, Don, I, I feel that, that, like you had proposed earlier, like to have a reverse setback that would protect the, if there was a fade lot or, or something or, or whatever, that they couldn't just move into that vacated business that went defunct and all of a sudden say, you gotta change because now I'm gonna build this house, that's why we need those reverse setbacks, and I think they would be protected that way, the farmer would. You'd, we, you had talked about that at the commissioner meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we wanna keep the agribusiness definition on the first page and strike the one on the second page, or do you want both of them gone?
Gone.
I think we can take both of them out.
Take both of them out?
I don't know, what do you think, yeah, I don't think they're really-
I think we're laboring on a lot.
I do too.
Move on to the next part.
Yeah.
Okay, agricultural processing facility, that's as it was before, the classes.
I think, I think we got input from 12, 12, we got the article five from 12, Gary? 12, there's different counties?
Yeah.
And the majority of them were at or moving to a smaller number of classes.
I don't know, that's just really a huge, huge difference and I don't know that I'm all together comfortable with it, I mean, even the D E N R has more classes than that, you know, and basically you're saying, once you get cleared for 500 animal units, you can just do whatever you want, get up to the limit.
No.
Yeah, you have to come in and get approved, if you wanna go to 10,000, you gotta get approved for 10,000.
Because it goes on per animals, units.
So they're gonna come in and get a CUP, the CUP kicks in at 500 animal units, is that D E N R permitting for 500 AUs, is that where, where we are right now?
You're here there, 1,000?
Yes.
Yeah.
So they're at 1,000.
Mm-hmm.
Oh wait, we forgot, they did change something in animal feeding operations, right above that table, um, I think you need to strike, you've just got an established number, why are you striking the established number? Because when they come in for a permit, aren't they supposed to tell you how many animals they want? I mean, isn't that the whole idea of permitting, is you're permitted to take care of X number of animals and then if you want more animals, you need to come back in and tell us about it and if there is additional things that need to be considered, they can be considered at that time.
You see any problem putting that back in, Gary?
No, or you just go farther, maybe it was meant to originally go where an established number, where a lot of facility, where animal units are confined, you just strike out.
Well, doesn't that definition come from the D E N R, because they're the ones that talk about 45 days in a 12-month period and all of that stuff, that, that comes from D E N R, I believe.
So there, there is no one that just was striking that. I don't know, but I don't understand why, why they stopped it. I wonder why they stopped that.
Yeah.
Because they were trying to delineate between an animal feeding operation and a CAPO.
Hmm.
I think.
Hmm.
Everybody's good with them striking yet?
I think, is that why?
Striking what?
They were at a point, because the discussion, I remember we've had it before, where we were trying to delineate between an animal feeding operation and a confined animal feeding operation, which is larger, which requires conditional use permit and all the other stuff that goes with that, where animal feeding, if you had 10, 10 head of cows, you still are an animal feeding operation.
Right, but you don't have regulations at the number 10.
But-
There's no regulations at that number.
No.
And I think that's why it has to say an established number, because otherwise they could come in and say, yeah, I'm gonna have 50 cows and then all of a sudden they've got 50,000 cows, because it's not an established number, I'm not saying you can't expand up to where you, you would require permitting, but if you don't know how many are there, how are you gonna regulate it, how are you even gonna know what they started with? And we're not talking about pastured cattle at all and they make that clear when they talk about it doesn't sustain crops or vegetation, this isn't somebody turning their cattle out into the corn after they harvested it or anything like that, they're talking about open feedlots.
Gary, you wanna speak to the reason for going down in numbers of classes from six to two?
Well, I know the discussion is, you know, we've kinda went back and forth on, on these numbers and I think it was felt that, that we needed to go to lesser classes, more, more straightforward numbers just to make it more comprehensible, that, that seemed to be the, the driving force of, we're just gonna have these two, we have the, the smaller one and then the 510 to 10,000 on up, I, that just seemed to be the, the way the discussion went and, and, you know, I know we all struggle with where that low number should be, but this just seemed to be a, a point that they felt would be, would be the best for all, for all the groups maybe to make it simpler, that just seemed to be the way it went.
Especially with animal units, not, not animals.
Exactly, that was, that was the key and, and, I mean, we can, you've been talking about this for, well before I was even here, for a year and a half of what those numbers should be, but I think they just felt like this was a good- But I think they just felt like this was a good compromise for everyone. We all have to, they were trying to do a little give and take. And they just thought that this was, this was a good point, good point to start at.
At some point you have to draw a line.
I guess I agree with, with reducing the number of classes. I'm not so sure I agree with the number where Class B starts and where Class A starts. I guess I would, I would think that Class B should be something more like, like 300 to 1,000, and Class A, B, 1,000 to 10,000. And mainly, if you go through rest of the ordinance as it's presented, it really wasn't a problem with number of animal units or anything until you got to where there's hog barns and stuff coming into the county, which if you go by the rest of the ordinance that's proposed here, those are gonna get thrown into a C U P anyway. And these classes and with the special permitted use and all that is basically gonna pertain mostly cow calf or dry lot guys. And I think 100 is pretty restrictive on that. To make everybody that wants to come in, basically you're gonna have a single pen full of cows and you're gonna have to have a C U P to outline everything.
Well, all they have to do is have a manure management program. They don't have to go through all of the D E N R permitting. They just have to, it, it's, it does not have to be that extensive. They just want them to understand what is gonna be happening on the property. And 100 animal units, they're not gonna have a lot of, a lot of restrictions put on them. They just wanna make sure that the people know what they're gonna do with the manure and, you know, basic things. They're not gonna make them do D E N R permitting for 100 animal units.
I think it's a waste of time to have guys come in for 100 animal units. I guess personally, we have approximately 300 animal units on our farm. And it produces enough manure to cover barely 20 acres. So, I mean, to make somebody make out an entire manure management plan for something like that, where it's so miniscule is a waste of time and it's a waste of zoning office's time.
Well, there's been an awful lot of complaints about hobby farmers and the small amount of manure that they produce. 100 animal units does produce a fair amount of manure. And like I just said, they're not gonna require D E N R permitting at that level.
If you're worried about hobby farmers, that 100's not gonna-
They, they won't come in anyway.
Because-
We're not talking about regulating hobby farmers, but you guys bring that up just about every meeting.
But your complaints you're saying are about hobby farmers.
No, I'm saying that's what the producers complain about.
What are you saying, Chris? I couldn't hear you.
I said that, I'm sorry.
The complaints that have been fielded about smaller producers or whatever have been about hobby farmers, which they're all gonna be under 100 animal units and they're gonna be under 50 animal units. The vast majority of them, of the ones that people are complaining about piling up their manure next to ponds or next to a creek or pushing it into the ravine. And I can share stories about the ones I've seen too. But this class system is not going to stop any of that. That's not gonna encompass any of that. It's just gonna make small producers come in for unnecessary paperwork and it's gonna put more load on the zoning office. I think that it'd be better served to increase that class size.
Well, I think what people in the surrounding area are concerned about are the smaller barns coming in with no regulation whatsoever.
Those small barns are already caught and later in the-
If it's 499 animal units or less.
Yeah, but they'll be in the CAFO, not the AFO. They'll already be caught by the CAFO Act, right, correct?
Right, later on they're already caught because of their-
He's talking about changing the class sizes.
No, I understand that, but-
But when you go later on and you go basically what a concentrated animal feeding operation is on page four, it's going to say it contains at least 500 animal units, utilizes a liquid manure system. Well, that already captures all of those barns, what you're talking about in small nursery barn, whether it is 100 animal units or 1,000 animal units, it's in the CAFO section, which requires a conditional use permit. So, this class size, what I'm saying, underneath the animal feeding operation, that's only gonna pertain to dry lots and cow calf operations. It's not, that doesn't, it basically doesn't have anything to do with any of these barns where you have confined animals.
No, I'm still not comfortable with bumping it all the way up to 1,000. But if you wanted to raise the bottom number 200.
I think the current ordinance is at 300.
It is 300.
And that's worked for years and years and you haven't had a problem until people started trying to put up hog barns, which we've already got a catch for that later on in the proposal here. So, I don't think we need to make these classes more restrictive. Yeah, I see that you're reducing it to Class A, Class B, but you're reducing the numbers to make it more restrictive on guys.
I think the fact is, is there'll be very few, uh, applicants below 300.
Exactly, yeah, very few.
Very few, because this only pertains to new, new operations anyway. This only catches the new ones. The guys that are already doing smaller numbers or grandfathered in, they're not, they're not gonna be affected by it.
What's your thoughts, Dennis?
It's always hard to delineate where we need to be on the animal numbers. I like the two-class system to get rid of all the extra stuff that's, that was gonna fall out of common anyway.
But I think if you got 500 cattle in a dry lot, I think there should be some little discussion about what they're gonna do with the manure.
I guess using my own place as an example, where I said I already got about 300. If I added 200 to it, or 200 animal units to it, nobody would even notice. I mean, the effect of day-to-day operations, the amount of manure, all that stuff would be miniscule, where you wouldn't even notice it. So, I think that is-
If you're talking about increasing it by more than 50%.
They really, it really doesn't. I hate to say that. I mean, we got pens with 150 head, you know, and you go to 100 head, it, it, you, you don't really see much, much difference. I mean, i- in the grand scheme of what we do.
I think we should, uh, move on to some other topic for a while unless there's one kinda
All right.
rest, so we can get through some of this stuff that's in here that we know we could probably-
We're not gonna go till midnight on this.
I'm not, I'll wait. That's lost, I think, so I'll need to check up.
Okay, so back to the animal feeding operation definition. Are we leaving that phrase in that's in the blue? The established number?
The original one said that an established number-
Yeah.
I think that should stay there.
Okay.
I don't know, that's good, yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
All right, so we found a point of agreement. All right, so, um, cow calf pairs, there's only a minor adjustment in the cow animal units. We all right with that? Everybody agree with that? Just let it go and move on? All right, we just added some goats, that's a good idea, in the next page. Okay.
You can have a lot of goats if you want.
That's a lot of goats.
Stack of three, hi.
Yeah, so at a tenth of an animal unit, that would be 1,000 goats at 100 animal units. Or 3,000 goats for 300 animal units before they had to decide where they were gonna put the poop.
And don't they have to put the poop somewhere anyway, though? Technically? Whether you have one or you have 300, you're still gonna have to manage that.
There's a big difference between one and 300.
Well, yeah, I know that. Growing up on farms, I know that, but you still have to have a plan.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't have to be an expensive thing. You just come in and you say, okay, this is what I'm gonna do with it. Okay, good, you got a handle on this. You're not somebody that came in from Omaha and decided that you're gonna have raised goats for a living or whatever and-
That's stupid, no.
I think that's the only reason for having, you know, the rules in place, is to keep the people thinking about what they're doing. You know, Zane knows what he's doing. He's been doing it for a long, long time. Anyway. Nobody has a problem with even goats in there, including goats in there. Okay. Is there any other animal you think we should add? We've got ducks, we've got poultry in there, hens, turkeys. I don't think there's any other major animal that they raise for food. Oh, trivia about goats, that is actually the most eaten meat in the entire world. More people eat goat meat pound for pound than any other meat. Because they can live on almost nothing. A lot of them in, in the Middle Eastern sparse areas. Not that I'm sure you care about that.
Because they live on wheat.
Yeah, they do. They eat everything indiscriminately.
Top cans.
And evidently they like to jump up on your cars.
They do.
On the next part of the conversion table, I think that we could save a lot of space in zoning ordinance, the whole page, if we just stretch the whole table, the conversion table. Because, I mean, you've got the animal unit table. All it does is take a simple math equation to figure out how many animal units you can have.
Calculators work.
Right.
It, it, it gets kind of mind-boggling when you look at that. First of all, the strikes, it really does help.
When you're just flipping through and you see this giant table taking up the whole page.
That's been discussed before and I, I don't disagree with it.
Do we wanna wait until Dennis comes back? Well, how do you feel about it? You were obviously there when they did this. Mr. Kennedy?
I, I'm totally indifferent on it.
Okay.
Some say a, a number is a lot more accurate than the calculation, but-
So, do you think it's, it's helpful for people to see that number if they were thinking about bringing it in? Coming in for a permit? Or do you think that they can do the math on their own and figure it out on their own?
We'll be checking the math anyway, anyway. So.
Okay, we'll wait for that.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about it. It'd be nice for, uh, I think it would be nice for a, a producer to be able to come and have a document that's concise and, and, uh, pretty direct. Uh, that probably makes it more concise, concise, reducing it.
It just, it just used, uh, just used the conversion table, I'm sure.
Yeah. I mean, we've had that conversation before too.
Yeah, we have.
Probably six times.
It goes on and on and on.
Yeah, we've still continued it.
Okay, so do we wanna strike the conversion table or is anybody having objection to that?
No.
No? Let her go? All right. I think they were trying to eliminate some of the redundancy. Okay, animal waste facility building permit. We don't have a definition of a building permit? In the ordinance?
Not currently.
Oh, okay.
I do have a question about that. Go ahead, listen here. Um, I guess we've always talked about, or the understanding was in any construction, new construction being built needed a building permit. But I'm not sure what it means by existing building.
Yeah. Would that be like building on an addition?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so it's not maintenance.
Remodel, or remodel a barn, I suppose.
Isn't it just a good change of design or something?
As long as you didn't change the footprint, you didn't need a building permit.
Oh, right, if it blew over.
Well, or if you're, you need to reshingle your house, we're not-
You shouldn't have to get a town building permit for that.
You had to reshingle your house, you had to get a building permit.
Right.
But you don't have to do that here. I mean, you shouldn't have to.
Well, I think there was an issue with Fred Schultz's barn. There was an issue with Fred Schultz's barn that burned out.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And it got, got resolved, but it, uh, should've never, should've never-
Had to go through that.
It never changed.
I know that the intent, the original intent way back was, anything that was new-built, required a building permit so that it would show up on the, for the Director of Equalization so that they could-
Right.
Tax you for it right away.
Okay, so should we modify this a little bit to say changing of existing building footprint?
Addition probably they did it at.
Right.
Addition to existing building?
Right.
Or addition to-
To make it bigger.
That's what I say, anything, anytime, even if, even in a existing house out in the country that if you put a debt on it, you're increasing the footprint. So, you're required to be a building permit.
Mm-hmm. You just say or existing building.
But if you're repairing a wall that caved in or a window that broke, you don't need a building.
Right.
So, we're gonna insert or an addition to an existing building? Is that what you wanna do?
Or expansion of an existing building?
Expansion of. What do you like? Expansion of or addition to?
Expansion or addition.
Expansion of existing buildings, so.
That sounds good. I agree.
I have no comments on page four.
Okay.
I think that on page four, under the CAFO definition, that, number one, where it says contains at least 500 animal units, I think that should follow whatever we decide Class A is under animal feeding operation. If we change that, so if we change it to 1,000 or 600 or whatever in one definition, the other one should be the same.
Well, yeah, they would have to do that if they made the changes. You would have to make the document consistent. Okay, so as it stands now, it's 500 and we're striking the old definition to meet the new definition. it's five hundred and we're striking the old definition to meet the new definition, so that is consistent with what's going on right now. You want to keep moving?
I'm ready.
Alright.
How about this number four and five? And that's, and, you know, I, I agree with Joe put in that use environmentally controlled, uh, where they're.
That's definition from the state, from the DNR.
Yeah, I think that's a good one. I, I do. I mean, I, I don't have any problem. The only thing that when, when we're talking about CAFOs and AFOS, these four and five both pertain, cause if you don't think all water doesn't run someplace, you, we're fooling ourselves. Whether it comes off forty goats or four hundred head of fat cattle. I have a little, little problem if we don't include in one, we ain't gonna include in the other. Cause we, I mean, unless you live in a swamp, where everything boils to the metal, all water runs someplace, just like out of a septic system. It all runs someplace.
Well, that is in the DNR's definition of a CAFO. So I think we should leave that in there since it comes straight from the state.
I know, but like I said, it should pertain to the AFO too.
So do you wanna add that to the AFO?
What's that?
And it will if someone turns you in.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Zane, so are you, are you saying that, that anybody could make the argument that anything should be considered a CAFO since the water run off of it, or what are you saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, I don't know. I, I don't think they have, I think, I don't know if the state, I don't know the state's laws. I thought the states were at nine ninety-nine. But, um, I would have to look at those definitions from the state, but, I don't know. It just, it just kinda strikes me as we're trying to put an animal unit on water. It doesn't work. For as far as the county, you see what I'm saying?
Well, I, I understand and, um, that's, that's my concern is to protect the water. And that's why I'm saying if you got five hundred animals, you can just come in and talk with us, as long as that's not running into a creek, that's running into a river. You know, if you got a safe way to dispose of that manure, you shouldn't have to go through DNR permitting for five hundred animals. That's what I'm saying. I'm making that point, but it doesn't hurt for them to say, okay, we're doing this with it. For the reason you just said.
My experience in Yankton County is there's probably more, uh, smaller animal number units with feedlots that cricks run through and the grains right in the streams in there are hog facilities.
And then it goes in the Beaver Creek, and then it goes in the Grand River, and then it goes in the Missouri River. You know, but we're trying to prevent more of that from happening with the new operations that come into feed. The other ones are grandfathered.
Yeah, I agree, uh, but it comes back to kind of a mute point because
Well, it's not, it's not moot if it's, if you're, you're preventing future contamination. I don't think that's a moot point.
By moot point, what I mean, Christie, is that people cannot exist, uh, in modern production agriculture, raising ten milk cows and, and, you know, twenty cows, it ain't gonna happen anymore. It hasn't for thirty, forty years. And they're gonna be seldom, uh, there's gonna be a continued, uh, consolidation of land and, and livestock feeding, uh, programs going forward for a long time. So, you know, that's my, my point was probably the more contamination probably occurs from the people that aren't.
And the smaller ones.
I know of situations where they, uh, they push their manure into a creek, a pond that runs into a creek, and he doesn't, doesn't have anywhere near that number.
What about putting number four and five that are in concentrated animal feeding operation description? Into the animal feeding operation?
You wanna add those to that?
Add it.
Add them in there.
Just, just put those two, if you're gonna leave them there, you're gonna have to put them on the other.
Cause it's basically, if you took the, the number four and five that's in the concentrator animal feeding operation, which are state law anyway.
Right.
And just so that it's a highlighted or whatever, but that's, just add those two bullet points or language into animal feeding operation definition also.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, that should work.
What do you think, Chris?
I don't think that makes, I, I guess it doesn't really matter to me, but I guess it makes sense what you guys are saying.
Yeah.
Cause the guy's over five hundred, they're doing the work and the other ones, I mean, it's like, it all goes someplace.
Yep.
And I don't wanna go to the creek, I wanted it for my corn.
Okay, and then underneath that we have concentrated animal feeding operation existing. That seems pretty straightforward. How is that different from the old one?
Which one?
This CAFO existing.
The old CAFO existing definition.
There wasn't even existing.
Oh, there wasn't one. Oh, I see, okay. Alright, I was just.
Animal feeding operation is CAFO combined into one, one definition.
Right, 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 right. It was, wasn't it? Okay, alright. Okay, is that fine with everybody? That seems to be an accurate description. Okay, must have tasted animals.
Feeding operation, now what is that?
Yeah, the definition of feeding operation doesn't make much sense. Why are we calling that description a feeding operation?
No, I didn't either. I don't know if that was in another place. Gary, do you remember?
No, that was in the, in the discussion with.
When people talk about a feeding operation, I had to think of animals.
Right, you too.
Yeah, how about grain feeding operation, grain feed operation, grab the I N G. Grain sales operation?
I think that's, I mean, stuff listed here like green elevators, ethanol plants, that's back in the agriculture product processing facility.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
So that's already, that's already got a definition attached to it.
And, and that says the raw agriculture products too. I'm not exactly sure why that was, okay?
I agree with this.
I think we could just strike the whole feeding operation thing.
What, what's this five sixteen up above there?
That just got moved from five thirteen to five sixteen.
Okay. Nothing would change this much. Okay.
I hadn't got to, I guess, at the point of where I saw where it showed up in here anyplace, but on page six where it's the, the manure system definition, which, which Joe kind of had, um, is that something that's included in like the permit conditional use permit process for large feeding operation or something that's? Cause I know that, uh, well, of course Nebraska, some other places use a, a formula that Joe talked about where they, you know, you're allowed more animal units if you have a combination or one of the other, or the other. But is that gonna play into our ordinance, or is that just a definition thing that's here or?
Well, it plays into the setbacks for one thing, but yeah, it would be a discussion point for the larger operation.
Okay. I just wanna kinda understand where it was, where we're heading with it.
It had to be defined just so people knew what the difference is.
Right.
I don't know. I kinda have a problem with the semi-solid. I think that that's a real gray area. People can tell the difference between a solid and a liquid. I think if you're gonna do something like that, stick with just the two. The semi-solid, then it, then they're arguing about which category it is so they can get a, a closer setback by saying it's one or the other. And I think it's pretty obvious if you've got a dry lot, that's considered solid manure.
You were at the discussion, so you heard, you heard that back and forth.
Right, right, and then, and then, you know, obviously it rains, like you said.
I could've explained the semi-solid one to you. You're really good this week.
Right, I bet, but like I'm saying, I think that just creates a gray area where people can argue about what's necessary. I think it's, it's, it will be easier to enforce if you just eliminate that little category. That's my opinion.
I, I think it, it points to, uh, the dairies, uh, when it says that. And in the large, uh, dairy facilities, uh, they scrape, scrape the alleys, uh, sometimes several times a day, and that's pretty soupy stuff.
Well, that would definitely be liquid. When it comes out of the cow, it's liquid. There's no doubt about that. I don't think there's any argument about that. And I, I think it gets a little muddy when you're talking about, okay, then somebody decides to change their manure system. If they decide to start adding bedding to it. And that's why I think it'd be better, if you decide to go down this road, that it's just, it's either solid or liquid, and that's a little easier to define. Because you're not gonna build a hog confinement and have a pit underneath the building and then turn around and say, no, this is solid manure. You know what I mean? Obviously, it's not solid manure. But if you can say, oh, no, no, it's kinda thickish, you know, it could be a semi-solid, and then they start arguing about the setback. So I think if it's either one or the other, there's less debate and there's less gray area and there's less chance for controversy.
I don't, I don't disagree. I really don't. I mean, the semi-solid, I mean, you have to have a hog barn and if you have a
Dry lot cattle feeder, you know, that's two very different things.
Even in the same farm.
The only place that that might come into though is if you have a and I imagine it could be distinguished by either using liquid or solid, but, um, if you have a combination livestock farm where you have cattle and hogs confined barns, and when you're looking at setbacks, you know, you can't, it's hard to get setback.
That's just how it gets.
If you're gonna base your setback on the, on the pig, on the liquid manure and not the dry lot.
That's why it's easier just to go with animal units.
Well.
For the setback.
Especially for the setback, yeah. And especially, I mean, goodness, look at the colony. They grow everything.
Mm-hmm.
They grow everything out there. They've got turkeys and geese and cattle and hogs and every animal that, that you can eat. They grow it.
No goats, I don't think.
Well, maybe not goats, okay. No kangaroos either.
No good.
I've heard people eat those. They don't sound very tasty to me.
So, uh, you do later on, like you're talking where you change the setback part, so it's just by animal units. And the manure system definition, is there anywhere else, Gary, that's even in play other than the definition of CAFO where it has liquid manure system in there? Is there anything else that relates back to this?
I think it's just setback. And it says right in the DNR rules that, you know, you have to count all of the animals on the farm when you're talking about what kind of class you're in and stuff like that.
Not besides the expansion and prohibited special use. It's not really mentioned anywhere else.
So we're just basically, we're already talking about changing the setback stuff to animal units. And the only other place that it really even plays a role then is in the CAFO definition. Can't we just strike solid manures and semi-solid manure and just leave liquid manure system? So that would relate back to that CAFO definition and since there's nothing else in the proposal that would relate to it?
Yeah.
So where are we at?
Um, I believe we're at nursery swine on page seven, and I think that just.
What did, what did we ever decide on, on that manure system? Did we ever kind of go, okay, or whatever?
Oh, we were talking about striking the solid and the semi-solid and then just keeping the liquid manure because the liquid manure pertains to the definition of, um, a CAFO. Because the, it kind of gets complicated if a person wants to change their operation and say they're gonna use solid manure or semi-solid.
Yeah, no, I, I get all that, but I, I didn't know if we had a year or year and a half what we were gonna strike, what we weren't, so.
We were talking about striking one and two. And then leaving the definition for the liquid manure system. And going with straight up animal units when it comes to the setbacks because you can't argue with an animal unit.
That's right. I'm fine with that.
And that's kinda how the DNR does it. D E N R does it also. They count up animal units when they decide what class you're in and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Because just like you said, um, a lot of people raise more than one kind of animal. Alright, so is everybody finding the striking those two and move on? Alright, so are we gonna quit at nine, or you want to go later than that?
Hey, if we, if we quit at nine, we've kinda set up a schedule that we've, uh, county commission has that they're, we're gonna shoot to get this thing done and, uh, if we quit at nine, my recommendation is we have another meeting sometime this week and go on to the rest of it.
Well, I, I've got super busy this week. I've got conferences tomorrow, my husband's having, or excuse me, husband's having surgery tomorrow, conferences on, on, on Thursday night. This week is really. This week is really, look.
Yeah, I wouldn't. Let's follow on. Kind of just whiz ride along on some of the stuff though, like nursery and swine.
Nursery, swine, swine.
That's what the issue is. I mean, the swine barn, so that, that defines.
That defines it.
Now you can leave that there. Permitted special use, what we talked about several times already is, you know, it's kind of like wanting to, to sell jet skis down by the lake instead of at a boat shop. You know, it kind of fits the same. I mean, that's kind of a terrible analogy, but it's, but it's, it's.
Well, I.
If you have something that kind of fits in a district that doesn't offend or upset anybody about it and it'll fit into it and play into the agricultural type of thing.
Well, if you leave CAFOs out of it, I don't think CAFOs should be a permitted special use. I think a CAFO deserves a hearing.
But they're defined, they're defined as such though. I mean, they're, they're not defined as a permitted special use. Cause you still have to come for a conditional use permit on that. It's not a, not a permitted special use.
Right.
It's not? Okay, cause I thought you had it under there.
You know, cause a CAFO will require a conditional use.
Yep. Okay.
Permitted special use is something that's kind of off the wall.
The permitted special use also doesn't just apply to, to article five. You could add permitted special uses to any of the other zoning districts as well.
Okay, you've got animal feeding operations in there, so can we at least say class B animal feeding operations because I would not want 10,000 cattle just dropped on my doorstep without any warning.
But that's why we changed the definition from, from animal feeding operation to, you have a animal feeding operation definition and you have a CAFO definition. And once you get in, into the class A, whether you acknowledge it or not, it becomes a CAFO and it requires a condition of use. That was the purpose of creating the two, separating them and having a animal feeding operation and a CAFO. So a CAFO could never come under a permitted special use.
But it says right there, CAFO, under permitted special uses.
That's just where you stand.
Existing. Concentrated animal feeding operation existing.
Okay, I think that we need to, um, clarify the 125 as maybe expand 25%. So they don't think they can expand 125%?
I guess, I think we're kind of jumping around. I think we should.
Yeah, we are jumping around. All right.
I'm good too. Where the hell are we at?
Go back.
I, I'd suggest that unless anybody's got a serious difficulty with any of the definitions that we've moved to article five and start talking where the need of the thing is.
Well, I think we're almost there.
We are.
I think we are there.
Yep.
All right.
So is that permitted? Didn't get struck?
Well, I think there's nothing in 505 besides what we put 50, 503, we already had lots of today in, so you should be able to go straight to 506, I would think.
Okay, why did you strike dwellings in, as a permitted use?
That's moved to the permitted special use section.
Why? People should be able to live in an egg zone.
They are, as a permitted special use. Which basically is setting up that there's performance standards for dwellings, which is in section 516, which is new. Basically, there would be no.
There are performance standards for dwellings, but you're trying to reduce the number of performance standards on a CAFO that can contaminate the land and the air and the water and cause it to harm your neighbors.
There's no reductions on performance standards for CAFOs. There's only increased performance standards for them.
I think dwellings should be a permitted use.
From the input that I've heard from many people in the ag district, I think that there needs to be some kind of protections from residents moving out into an ag zone district. And simply moving the dwellings into a permitted special use doesn't impose any more restrictions on the homeowner than you're trying to impose on a farmer or someone with animals of 100 animal units in a dry lot. So, um, really you're in an ag zone district, not a residential district. So it makes sense that there's a very small burden put on a dwelling moving out into an ag zone district.
I don't think that putting a mile and a half setback is a small burden to bear. And if they get a mile and a half setback, then I want a mile and a half setback because my house is there before any additional CAFO operation. So where's my protection?
It's not saying that a new residence has a mile and a half setback. It's saying that anybody that moves within a mile and a half of existing A4 CAFO that they don't, that the A4 CAFO doesn't have to worry about expansion due to the new residence.
So you're supposed to give up all of your rights for someone that may or may not expand for something that hasn't even happened in the future?
You're asking.
Unreasonable.
You're not.
Because that house does not contaminate the earth. The house does not contaminate the ground.
That house, though, puts a stop to any economic development of anybody that's existing there and infringes on.
Not necessarily.
And it infringes on the existing A4 CAFOs' rights to expand and anybody's property rights around that new residence. So being the new residents moving in, then, uh, the existing operations should have preference. And it's not saying that someone can't build a residence within a mile and a half of an A4 CAFO. It's just saying that the A4 CAFO doesn't have to worry about expansion due to that new residence. If you want to make the residents have priority over everything, then we shouldn't even call this ag zone district. We should just rezone the whole county to R1 and R2, R3, and not even have an ag zone district.
I'm talking about equal rights for people that are already there.
Right, this is only pertaining to new residences.
But I don't get the same mile and a half setback protection that you do as a farmer. Where's my protection from somebody moving in a CAFO next to me? And I had four generations of my family on that farm.
If you're in existing dwelling, then it's not, it doesn't pertain to you at all. And if you build your residence a mile and a half away from anybody else, then you already have.
Protect me from new ones coming in close to me.
Yeah, it does, because.
That's what you're saying, is they get the protection and the residents don't.
I'm just going by what's wrote on the page. If you're a new resident and there's a new, you're there, year one, and an A4 CAFO, a new one wants to come in year two or year three or year 20 down the road, you've already got precedence because you're, you're there, you've got protection. What's saying is there was an A4 CAFO there year one and resident moves in year five, year 10, that, that existing A4 CAFO at year one doesn't have to worry about that new resident.
That has precedence.
Right.
Yep, let me see what you're saying.
They were already talking before who was ever there first.
Right.
Right, and that's what this is doing.
That's right. Because even if you lower it to five acres or whatever, but I mean, we just, we had a couple that, uh, just bought 40 acres and, you know, they can do whatever they want. They're, they're building the house, but they're building by, you know, a feed yard.
Well, they knew it was there, but you're talking a mile and a half out. A mile and a half is a big distance.
But it's not a setback from, it's not a setback that you can't build within a mile and a half. It's saying that anybody, any existing operation within a mile and a half of you can expand without worrying about setback from you.
Gary, where are you at on this?
Yeah, I mean, that's been the ongoing, that's been the ongoing discussion. And I guess we gotta take into consideration where the county commission was somewhat too. And that's, that's kind of where they landed. They're trying to find some kind of middle ground for some of these things, just like the next one, number three. I don't know, there's, there was some discussion and if you all have a, have a preference one way or the other about what about, like Christie said, for her farm, if she has 20 acres, do we want to allow her to have a additional home on it also? But we're just trying to find some ways to come to some kind of agreement on some of these things. I know it's hard. Uh, no matter which way you go, there's gonna be people questioning it. And so we're just trying to, trying to find some ways to, uh, where it kind of makes sense and, and for both sides and, and that we can feel good about moving forward on.
And you changed the farm building definition to include dwellings for people that are on a farm. And they can build a dwelling on their farm as a regular permitted use.
Where are you at?
I'm right on the article five here. It says permitted uses. But when you go to that definition of farm building, they changed it to include homes. So you're letting the farmer build a home, but you're not allowing other people to build their home as a permitted use.
And that's what we were talking about is that we're, we're proposing that if the commission feels like that it should be allowed for, for anybody, then we should say that at this point.
I guess I'm not following where you're saying the farm building.
I was reading that.
In the definition.
The definition.
The definition of farm.
It's the old definition.
Old definition.
It includes, includes the following there.
Page five.
Okay, I see it now.
Including dwellings for owners, operators, farm laborers employed on the farm and other family members.
Yeah, I see it now.
So in other words, if you're a farmer, you can build another house on there without a problem. But if you're not a farmer, you don't get that right.
And that's what we're talking about, number three, line changes at all.
I guess, to make it more consistent, I would just change the farm building definition to to get rid of the dwellings for owners and operators.
That would make it fair then.
So you're saying the farm building definition doesn't make sense?
I'm saying that by including dwellings in that definition.
I was gonna say, well, if you want to make it more, more fair, whatever, make it more clear, I would just get rid of the under section 506 where you got number three, additional farm, get, strike that and on the definitions of farm building, get rid of it so it doesn't say including dwellings for owners, operators. So basically, that way it would make it consistent that neither one of them.
I, I agree. That's what I would be changed to.
So you change the definition of farm building just to all buildings and structures needed in agricultural operation, strike the rest of it. And then strike number 506, section 506, number three.
Right. Well, we're, but we would have to have, at least, yeah, then just leave dwelling in access.
Yeah.
That makes sense. All right.
And they can still, the farmer can still have his kid build a house there if he wants to. He's giving 20 acres.
Yes, and also, yeah, if a farm exists, yes. If that takes us all the way probably to, uh, spreading injection and other applications in the news.
So on number three and 506, you're just striking the word farm from number three.
Correct.
So that everybody has the same right to buy an additional house on their property if they want.
And no one had an issue with 505 just saying accessory use or structure, which is number one.
Is that what they're thinking about changing to, Gary?
So where are you? 506.
505, number one, where you talked about accessory agricultural structures.
Any accessory use or structure. We have a lot of people that are farmers that are looking to build garages and starting buildings and stuff on ag property. So everybody's people there too.
Okay. So just put accessory structures and strike the word agricultural out of that? Is that what you're saying? I have a question about number nine on 503. So are you not permitting any mobile homes at all in the country or did you change that to a special permitted use?
Yes, that's what I can't move.
Oh, okay. Yep, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't outlawed because, um,
Oh, that's in 506.
People still need affordable housing. And modular homes are there as well, are they not? Yep. Okay.
I think you talked, Dylan, I talked about that. I think it should be added actually to number four. And you factored on the modular ones. Yeah. So I'll add or now modular in there.
Where did that get moved to?
Five six.
Section five oh six.
Five oh six. Yeah, so add modular to the management.
Right, okay, I see, yeah. Add modular.
So the next one's just five oh six, four, three, terminate, move to four. About the spreading injection. And issues with that one.
So basically, that's just talking about KFOs and stuff that are outside of Yankton County needing a permit. Spread or whatever.
Yep.
Okay, on five oh six, number six, where they're talking about expansion on existing operations, can we just change the wording to say expand twenty-five percent from the current operation? Because I think people glance over that and they think they can double their operation plus twenty-five percent. I realize it is.
That's the way I read it. I think it needs to be.
Twenty plus twenty-five percent. Yeah, when you just glance at that, you think, oh, I can double it plus twenty-five percent.
I have no issue with that.
So expand twenty-five percent of the current operation. And then can we do that, specify that that can be done one time? And then if they want to do it again, maybe they need to come in and talk to us. Because there's no limit on the number of times in that area.
I guess, I don't know, to me, pretty much, if you're saying they can expand twenty-five percent, I guess I would think anybody that did that, they could do it twice.
But if it's not fair. Not written, not said, that's what the lawyers say.
I guess that, that to me, it's a one-time expansion.
But if you don't say it.
If you don't say it, a lawyer will get in there and they'll say, not written, not said.
I can certainly add that in, one time.
Twenty-five percent one-time expansion.
You can do that.
Thank you.
But then add that they have to come in for.
Yeah, if they want to go more than that, then they just come in and ask for an increase in. Shane, we had talked about that five-year extension at length, when you guys were worried about family issues and stuff like that.
We are, yep.
So on five thirteen, we just gotta still discuss if they're getting their agri business, I assume we're striking number two.
Under which section?
Five thirteen, page thirteen. Number two.
Five thirteen, number?
Two.
Two.
Right, so if we're gonna strike agri business previous, then we don't need that.
If this, anything else, I don't know. Questions on anything else? I guess the setback table, we want just calculation, not, not the.
Do we need to have animal feeding operations, class eight, animal feeding operations listed under five oh seven as a conditional use?
No, because under the definition of concentrated animal feeding operation, it's, it says anything over five hundred.
Oh, yeah, that's right, definitely. Okay, yep.
And I don't know if this ever got in here, and I was gonna, I was gonna mention it the other night, it's commissioner meeting. Sherry, on her proposal, and I don't know if you have some of all of them in here, Gary, or what. But she had said that, so if an existing feedlot could not sell to an out-of-state entity. And I, I had it on my notes to, to talk about that, but it's, that's like saying, okay, you got, you got a house out there, you can't sell that to anybody unless they live in South Dakota. Or then I don't know if that ever got in or not.
What you're talking about is section five twenty. It's the, page twenty-four, I think is what.
It was on the sale.
Selling the, the license.
Selling, selling like a feedlot.
The, i- if, if they.
She said we don't want them to go, because there could be somebody moving.
Talking about brokering a permit.
What's that?
That pertains to brokering a permit. Okay, so you come before the board saying that you're going to do this KFO and all of this stuff. When what you really want to do is get the permit for somebody else.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that's already stopped some other, because that happened in Turner County. And we don't, I mean, yeah, that, that, that's not right, any, no, she was talking about the actual sales, I saw.
Sale of the, the land?
The speaking is in five twenty, it's just.
But I mean, because I know I had it on my notes, and it was like.
Yeah, no, it doesn't mention across state.
Good.
No.
We don't want that.
No, I don't think it's.
She had mentioned that, and, and I, I couldn't ever figure that out.
No, that's not in there.
Maybe she meant for brokering, but I, I didn't take it that way.
I see, okay.
You change that permit transfer to, from two years to five years. But then the board adjustment may here and grant exceptions to this rule in case of unforeseen life offense.
Right. Take that into consideration.
Right.
Right.
Or something happens that they have to sell it.
Mm-hmm.
That's not considered brokering yet.
Right, exactly.
But it still has to come before the board, too.
Right, just to explain what's going on. And I can't see anybody saying no.
No.
I mean, we've never had that kind of situation.
But just put a little protection in it.
Sure.
Which page are you on now?
Okay, we're, we're, I mean, I think we can agree that the last thing we talked about was on page thirteen.
Okay.
We were struck that one clause, number two. And I think that we've already discussed a single-family home, and it's still allowed on the farm set. I just read that somewhere.
Yes.
They just put it in the first place.
The last question was basically just, yeah, five sixteen, there's any concerns?
Yeah, and when they were talking about the, the septic system, it has to be done by a licensed installer, and so the rest of that's kind of unnecessary. The paragraph above it. And that's on page thirteen, end of thirteen and fourteen, where they're talking about septic systems. They have to do that anyway. They have to get a state permit. So we're all in agreement of the little update on the sanitary sewer and drainage system and stuff has to be done by a licensed installer, that state statute. So it's just being updated. So we are in section five sixteen. The residents and new church requirement.
Number three. What's to stop people from filing as their own little country church in their house, just to be able to waive a lot requirement or?
We've never had it happen in the last twenty-some years.
It will.
It's not, it's really not that hard to file the paperwork, I mean.
There's one in town, right on Twenty-first Street, this west of, I mean, one that was a house that converted. Do the church have a church sign in front of it now?
Right, there's, when I was going to college in Vermillion, there's probably twenty, thirty houses just in Vermillion there. They call themselves a church, but I mean, it's just a house there where maybe two families might meet, and they call themselves a church, which.
Then they probably get the tax rate exempt.
Right.
They don't pay taxes.
State requirement, that's about all you can do with.
So that's what I would say is, maybe strike that part.
Yeah, that camp, yeah, 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 that was, who was that? There was quite a few people there without that camp for the hills.
The reason that's, that stayed, that stayed in there was, and I have had this happen twice in my career, where, where the colonies have, have decided they were gonna populate a corner of land or something, that's what, that's kind of where that, that paragraph came from. They have, but it's been another name for it, where they're pretty much allowed by religious freedom that they can build multiple buildings. That maybe if it's a building required.
Which one was that, that?
Number five sixteen three, he's talking about.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, but you said.
That's kind of why it's allowed, is because they, they have the ability to to build a bunch of buildings, like they do on all colonies. And there's not a whole lot the counties can say about it.
So if our zoning, you're basically saying our zoning ordinance doesn't really pertain to them?
In that aspect, yeah, they have the ability to do that.
So then do we even need it in there? Our zoning ordinance doesn't really mean anything to them, then?
Though, is that it's, it's saying that, that zoning administration may allow that. Even though it's not as formal as like the rest of the ordinance.
Couldn't we put it may or may not?
That's what, it was in there before, and that's, that they just resolved. So it's always been there, but I guess I don't have I would, I'd prefer to leave it in and then pick it out, I guess.
I see what you're saying, but the may doesn't mean you have to.
Right.
Right, that's why it's may and not shall.
Yeah, I know.
It's not shall.
Or should.
Right.
Or should, yeah.
Just because I've had it happen a couple times, I prefer that that paragraph stays there.
What, what broom tree was?
Okay, number two.
Broom tree has dealt with a lot of controversy up in our country.
Five sixteen two, I have a problem with not allowing it to be planted, and this is why. If someone is going to build a nice home, they're going to need a loan. And the bank will not give you a loan unless that part, that piece of ground is parceled out that the house is gonna sit on.
Or if dad signs the note.
I don't think it matters if dad signs the note. They want to be able to have, they want to be able to repossess that property if they don't pay for the house.
Which if dad signs a note, he's basically cosigning it, so then they can come back on him, so then the bank doesn't have a problem.
They still won't give you the note, if it, if it's not a separate piece of property that they can pull out and sell. They're not.
Or somebody cosigns it, they'll just come take your farm, hell with that little piece of property.
Right.
Or they'll just pay it off.
Right, yeah. Maybe add it on the backside of the mortgage.
Two incidents of that that happened in the last couple of years.
So what's your issue, Christie? I mean, if, this ain't the twenty acres, I mean, so they, they can't, they can't plant it anyway unless you give them at least twenty acres. Regardless of age, so this is just saying that you have to have a building permit for the additional dwelling, even if they were getting.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Mm-hmm. That's real love of the, of the building permit.
Right, because you'd have to, to plant it in order to.
Gary, how, how tall do marijuana plants grow?
I can't tell you, John.
I've never seen one.
Oh, yeah.
They're pretty high. They grow really.
The wild ones.
Oh, the doves, the doves, they, yeah, they'd be fifteen foot high.
Yeah.
Best place to shoot ducks, that's where they fly to.
I guess one question, just, I don't know if it makes much difference, but you've got the, the water and sewer sanitary part, this part of section five six, five fifteen, shouldn't it be moved into five sixteen?
I guess, yeah, whether it's yard requirements either way.
Okay, yeah, I guess it doesn't matter, it's just.
Probably fine. Any other things? We do have to discuss too, I mean, we did put a number on the facility setback requirements for municipalities or for the municipalities, basically, all the way across the board. On five nineteen, number two, on page seventeen. And then cross on distance from the municipalities.
Was two miles in the previous zoning, was it not?
Mile.
A mile?
Mile.
Oh, okay. So what was two miles then? Was that a church or, no, because municipalities and churches were the same at a mile, right?
Well, like, Yankton though is, Yankton is actually in the ETG or ETJ, they set what the setbacks got to be.
Two, 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 hang on a second. Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's where I was thinking.
But like the small towns.
But like Irene.
Yeah, small, unincorporated municipalities or something. Yeah, a small, unincorporated municipalities or something like that, isn't that what it says?
So there's five nineteen that's been all rewritten in blue, where did that come from? Highlighted in blue.
Basically, that was from Joe's discussion about the setback, and then we discussed those. In the county commission, we discussed the one point nineteen, two point three one, and two point six four setback distances, times the, times the animal units to get the setback.
With a minimum of thirteen hundred twenty.
Mm-hmm. I just think, I, I, I know, Don, you want to get all through this, but I tell you what, without reading all this line for line, at nine thirty, I'm, I'm about tired of reading. I think we need to continue this on, because I, I just feel that there's gonna be too many things missed without studying this.
Well, and when can we have another meeting?
But I mean, just, just rush through it, I think we've worked too long and hard on all of ourselves.
You know, everything, everything that we've discussed almost has been discussed a thousand times in.
I know.
Zoning and, and, and the board, and this plan that's been developed here is extremely consistent with our existing ordinance, with the exception of changes and setbacks and those kind of things. I don't know. What's your thought, Gary?
Well, I guess at this point, I would think for the commission, that I would make the changes that we discussed tonight, and then we discuss the proposal that Chris had regarding the animal unit classes. And I think that would probably be good discussion point for at that meeting, I would guess.
Kind of start at five nineteen.
Right.
Well, we, we did discuss five sixteen thoroughly either, so we can.
Yeah.
Start, and start at five sixteen.
I just don't know if there's anything else. Yeah, in five, in the setback, unless people don't agree with the one point nine eight two. I guess the other discussion would be, whether, if we're eliminating solids and semi solids on the facility setback chart too, that would make a difference, but.
Five fifteen, I thought we got through that, I've got.
Five fifteen, yeah, I said five sixteen.
Oh, sixty.
Yeah, five sixteen.
Okay. Because there, there, there's a lot of blue here, and that's.
Yeah. So we can resume with section five sixteen.
Right, and then on the facility setback requirements, I guess, I've got issues with the feet per animal unit, because that makes it quite a bit more restrictive than the current ordinance.
On which one?
On the facility setback chart.
What we were just talking about with the nu, with the setback multiplication factor.
Basically, on that one, on a lot of the, once you get up over five hundred animal units, most every setback is almost doubled from current.
Yeah, but you're looking ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Right. We're gonna, we'll, we'll have issues with that, but I mean, let's just, that's just, if, if he wants to do the changes up to five fifteen, and then we work from five or sixteen or whatever.
Five fifteen, and then we'll forward.
Sixteen.
We'll move forward, start with sixteen.
Yeah, there's nothing.
I mean, I, I, unfortunately, I wasn't at the last, last meeting, so, because I had jury, jury duty, but, but I know Dan had some concerns about, yeah, whether or not we'd be able to get it done in one meeting or not, but, but I don't know what your feelings are, Don.
I'm totally opposed to putting it off for one month for the next meeting. I have no problem if we set up a meeting and come in and finish this off, but I think we probably promised the public that we'd have this thing done by the first of June. And that time is rapidly coming.
What's that, maybe three years?
Or longer.
Yeah.
I'd say longer.
And, the issue is, we'll probably have to make adjustments on it as we go down the road. But.
Looking at the calendar.
But even, even, Don, and, and I understand what you're trying to do, but even if we have a special meeting and, and don't discuss anything else, but start at five sixteen and, and he'll have them other changes written up, really, you really wouldn't even have to include beyond five sixteen.
Right.
Just stay with that, because sometimes, when we were working on this last year, every week, we were getting another printout, and they weren't numbered, which I do appreciate it now that we can go back for numbers, it was very hard to keep track, but from, from meeting to special meeting, special meeting, we had stacks and stacks of paper without, without having them numbered, and, and according to, it was a little confusing.
Well, as you know, Don, we have spring workshop next week for, that's, that takes care of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, right there. So unless we do it, had a special meeting the last week of the month before the first meeting and.
Monday night.
Before, yeah, and while we have our commission meeting Monday night.
Oh, that's right.
So, so, the only way we'd have it before the April sixth meeting would be the last, last, one of the last weeks, the last week or the.
Well, thirty days, these guys, they got full of baloney, and they probably am, but thirty days, these guys are gonna be out field planting farm. Nobody's gonna go out and sit in here dealing with, and that's, that's why the thing has been prolonged for over many years.
Not for thirty days, no, because it won't plant until April fifteenth. Federal crop. It won't like that, well, you can't, you can't.
You don't get caught.
Just don't get caught.
It's only illegal for you to get caught, right?
We'll have drainage commission on March twenty-third, that's a Tuesday night, but anytime March twenty-second through twenty-six, besides that night, or the twenty-ninth through the thirty-first would be available.
I think in order to meet, uh, meet Sherry's, uh, plan on giving announcements and so forth, we're, we're out of that.
But yeah, we're not, the problem is, yeah, we, we wouldn't, there'd be no way we could meet the ten-day, ten-day publication for hearing for the April meeting regardless then at that point. So that's the issue.
You, you have to, you have to.
Well, you have the other April meeting, the third one. So you could go to the third one in April.
The third.
The third, it's, you meet on the sentence, the first and the third.
Yeah, on the sixth and the twentieth.
Yeah, so you could go on the twentieth.
But, yes, but yeah, you're just talking about doing, looking at the changes, but.
Right.
They were trying to have the first, the public hearing for planning commission next month, is what they were hoping to do.
Yeah.
Which we can't do at this point.
To be, to be prepared for planning and zoning, uh, board. You haven't looked at this, uh, these changes, and I can understand why you want to look at them.
We just got them.
Question, well, they were, they were on the internet since Saturday.
Yeah, Friday, yep.
Okay, and so I can understand that. But I would request that you thoroughly review it before the, before that next meeting, and you have your key questions, and we not get too involved over things that Gary, with his experience, uh, probably has the right attitude to take towards it, coming in from past experience.
Okay, so we're gonna cover this then in the next regularly scheduled zoning meeting.
I don't want to do that.
I thought that's what you just said.
No.
Before the next meeting, special meeting, is what he's saying.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant the next zoning.
And we have to go ten days at least.
We have to go ten days at least published before the next meeting, so we'd, we'd have to basically meet.
The twenty, week of the twenty second.
Well, the week of the, yeah, the week of the twenty second, yes, and Tuesday night is out because we have drainage commission.
Yeah.
But any other night would work, or day, day or night.
Want to go on a Wednesday?
By me.
Make sure it's made.
Okay, what date is?
Wednesday, March twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Seven PM. Yeah.
That works.
Okay.
You want to meet at seven?
Yep.
Sounds good.
When is that?
Wednesday, March twenty-fourth at seven PM.
That's seven?
Seven, yep, just like tonight, and we'll start at five sixteen.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One second, Dan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you got a couple flats for me to sign when you get to it?
Hey, we're gonna meet at seven o'clock.